...alignment and joint meeting with the Facilities Enrollment Advisory Committee. I'd like to first take an opportunity to go around the table and make sure everybody's[107.92][107.92]introduced themselves so that the FIAC members know the members of the Board and vice versa. So, I'm Justin Hardings, I'm the Boyd President.
Paul Bailey, Board Member.
Donna Brightman, Vice President.
Taylor Oliver, FIAC Committee.
Mary Newby, FIAC Committee.
Boyd Michael, Deputy Superintendent.
Chad Chriswell, Senior Project Manager and Planning Supervisor.
Jackie Fisher, Board Member.
Melissa Williams, Board Member.
Karen Harshman, Board Member.
Clayton Wilcox, Superintendent.
Great, well, thank you to the members of the Facilities Enrollment Advisory Committee for being here today. Just as little background, the Board provided a charge to the Facilities Committee some months ago to do a couple of things, primarily was to find, to work to make recommendations for an attendance zone for what we're calling the West City Elementary School, hopefully soon to be renamed to what its permanent name will be. And second, to look at any other attendance zone realignments that they would recommend or that they think makes sense for balancing the enrollment at our schools and really making the best use of our school facility resources. So, we wanted to have this meeting today so that we could sort of get a snapshot of where you are. It's not to make a recommendation to the Board at this point yet, but for us to understand where you are and to see if the Board wants to provide any direction on the course that you're taking so that when we get to a final product, really, we feel like we've communicated with each other and understand what you're bringing to us in response to what we've asked from you. So, with that as background, I will turn it over to Dr. Wilcox and his team who've worked with the Facilities Committee on our charge.
So, thank you, Dr. Hardings and members of the Board. Just a couple of quick comments. First, Dr. Hardings, thank you very much for pointing out that this new school will not be called West City Elementary School. A number of community members have approached me and said how inappropriate it would be to name another school for a compass point. And so, I know the Board will be talking about that at great length at some time in the future. So, again, thank you for pointing that out for our community members who are listening. The second piece is that this is an advisory opportunity, I think, for the Board to take a look at the work that Mr. Michaels and the FIAC Committee have undertaken. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Michaels to make a few opening points, and then he will likely turn it over to Mr. Chriswell or the FIAC Committee members who are here with us. And before I lose sight of the fact, I should say thank you for your work. I've not stepped in on a FIAC Committee meeting this year. Mary, thank you once again. Mr. Oliver, thank you very much as well for your leadership. So, thank you, Mary. Mr. Michaels, Dr. Michaels.
Okay, well, I think Dr. Hardings and Dr. Wilcox both have said a great deal of what I'd like to share, but I'd also like to echo my thanks to the FIAC Committee, not only our co-chairs that are here today, but our members that aren't here today, as well as Chad and Rob, Rob Rollins, Chad Chriswell, our Transportation Department, a variety of people participated in every meeting. And there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into preparing and responding to questions from the FIAC Committee from one week to the next time that they meet. So, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and staff have worked hard to try to provide the FIAC with the information that they need to make these recommendations or considerations today. This is a progress report. We're very interested in any comments or thoughts that the Board may have, not only today, but across the summer or between now and when recommendations will be made. Time is a luxury that we have right now, and I think the FIAC Committee wants to use that to their advantage. We're waiting until fall, see what type of fall enrollment numbers bring us, if anything new develops in the housing market and the economy, any changes to policy procedures, laws that may prompt other growth or slow growth or new developments that might pop up. But based on the best information we have available right now, the considerations before you are the best thinking of the FIAC as of today. They're certainly looking for additional input, and will be monitoring additional data that will come out in September with our new enrollment and other things that I've described. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chad to give you a quick review of the maps. He's going to stop at the end of several different groups. He has these grouped in a particular way, and we certainly entertain any questions that you might have. But again, today is not final recommendations. Today is, you know, you do not need to know everything there is about this, and we'd be glad to come back as many times as need be to discuss the considerations and then certainly, once we get to the point of making recommendations. So, with that, I'd like...
Would you like questions as you go, map by map, or at the end of each group? Or hold our questions to the end?
At the end of each group, we think will be the best way to do that because probably a lot of questions will be answered as you get through the group, but definitely at the end of each group, we want to go back through some maps and some considerations then because as you've been involved in it, you know, it makes sense to us. But when you hear for the first time, it just starts to become a lot of words and a lot of slides, and it becomes a little bit overwhelming for the first time to look through it. So, we'll kind of, we think we've grouped these, that they make some sense, and then we'll go back through them in as much detail. And again, if it turns out the Board wants us to come back again or to answer more questions, again, for these considerations, we'd be glad to do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'll probably run through most of the report. I will invite the co-chair persons, Ms. Newby and Mr. Oliver, to pipe up or step in if they'd like to add any comments or any components to the report. As had been previously stated, in February of 2013, the Board of Education issued a charge to the Facility and Enrollment Advisory Committee. There were three components of that charge, the first of which was the Pangborn Enrollment Relief, and that task has been completed. The remaining two components of that charge were to develop an attendance zone for the new West City Elementary School and to develop other attendance zone realignments as necessary. Since January 2014, the Committee has met five times. Those meetings have been public meetings, the meeting minutes have been put on the FIAC website. During the course of those meetings, they were also covered by the Herald Mail, which is here today. During the course of those meetings, they reviewed 27 different attendance zone options, and they distilled those options into 14 draft attendance zone realignment proposals. Of those 14 proposals, 13 recommendations are for elementary school attendance zone modifications, and one recommendation is for a middle school attendance zone modification that's more of an administrative modification. The current process and progress of the Committee, they asked us to put together a progress report to present today to the Board of Education, which is the purpose of this work session. And that way, they could kind of update you with their current status before going back and re-reviewing it this fall. So, the Committee started by looking at all 27 Washington County Public School Elementary Schools, and they looked at the 2018 projected enrollment. From that review, they basically prepared this progress report that proposes some sort of a tenant zone boundary modification to one of the 14 elementary schools that are shown on the screen. As you can see, that the 2018 projected enrollment basically varies between 64 percent in some of the schools that they're proposing modifications to, all the way up to Lincolnshire, which is projected to be 115 percent over state-rated capacity, and Williamsport, which is projected to be 109 percent over state-rated capacity. As part of the FIAC process, obviously, they adjusted the state-rated capacities to account for the pre-K programs because they were dealing with attendance boundary modifications. So, that was where we said that way, we could have a good apples-to-apples approach during this process. The result of the progress report that you've received, kind of in summary, you can see that basically with the current proposed recommendations, the schools, the 14 schools proposed, two of which are set to close and go to 0 percent projected enrollment in 2018, they have basically leveled it out to where we're between percentages of 90 percent to 96 percent, with the exception of Williamsport Elementary. Williamsport Elementary with the current proposal remains at 102 percent of state-rated capacity. Now, that's still 42 less students than their enrollment that they had this past fall. And one of the things that the Committee is looking at is, we know we have a magnet program at Williamsport, and recent years, we've seen a little bit more in-migration from students from other districts coming in to the enrollment at that facility. So, we're going to re-review that this fall, but at this point in the process, this is kind of where we stop. We think it's going to put us pretty close, and, but that's the reason there's one red number left. So, the progress report that you received, as Mr. Michael had indicated, it was grouped into three separate groups. There's an executive summary, basically to summarize the work of the Committee, some of the assumptions and their process. The three groups, the first group creates a new West City Elementary Attendance Zone. Group two basically closes the Conica Jig and Winter Street Elementary Attendance Zone. And then, it also provides enrollment relief to Ruth A. Monroe Eastern Primary while creating a new Salem Avenue Elementary Attendance Zone. And then, Group Three provides enrollment relief for Lincolnshire, Pangborn, and Williamsport Elementary Schools. As Mr. Michael indicated, as we get to the end of each of the groups, we'll stop, take a break, and see if we can go through some questions. That way, we don't have to go through 85 slides to find a particular answer. So, with that, I'll move on to the Group One Recommendations. The first recommendation is to reassign approximately 260 K-5 students from the Salem Avenue Elementary Attendance Zone to become part of the new West City Elementary School Attendance Zone. As you can see, it's basically the southwestern and westernmost portions of the existing Salem Avenue Elementary Attendance Zone. The first portion is essentially the Hager's Crossing Development. If you look closely on the video on screen, and all these maps are included in your report, you could see in the lower right-hand corner, the Walmart, basically the Best Buy area, that's the Hager's Crossing Development. You can see the location of the school and the number of residences around that area. That area will include approximately 155 non-transported students at this point in time. So, those students are currently bused to Salem Avenue and will now be able to walk to the new West City Elementary School, or the new school's name, as we previously discussed. So, the other portion of Salem Avenue is the lower western portion of the existing district. It basically is south of Washington Avenue. Nottingham Road and East Place Road, if you're familiar with them, would be the boundaries to the east. You can also see the Ball Field and the Water Tower kind of in the upper corner of the indigo area that's depicted on screen. These students would also then be sent to the new West City Elementary School from the current Salem Avenue Attendance Zone. Boundary recommendation number two would reassign approximately 97 K-5 students from the closing Conica Jig Elementary Attendance Zone to become part of the new West City Elementary Attendance Zone. As you can see by the area on screen, this is essentially the high-density residential area that resides along US Route 40 on the current Conica Jig District. So, if you go out to the far west of the existing district, it's going to be approximately five miles away from the new West City Elementary School, which is shown in the upper right corner of the map that's shown on the screen. These students would basically be able to come right out to US 40, and it would be a pretty quick trip right down to the new West City Elementary School. You can also see a little bit of the landfill, and the Conica Jig Creek serves as kind of a natural boundary around this area, right out to the west and to the north. The third recommendation in creating a new West City Elementary Attendance Zone is to reassign approximately 26 K-5 students from the existing Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone to become part of the new West City Elementary School Attendance Zone. This area is essentially south and in-between US 40. If you look closely, you can see that encompasses a good portion of the Western Maryland Parkway and a lot of commercial businesses towards the south. The primary density of this area is to the north and between US 40 and Washington Street. This kind of creates a natural loop for our Transportation Department to go through, to pick students up, and to circle back around to the new West City Elementary School. It picks up Hopewell Road, and it also, as part of this particular move, it does create a little bit of enrollment relief to Lincolnshire Elementary, which we had previously shown was projected to be at about 115 percent of state-rated capacity. The fourth and final recommendation in Group One is to reassign approximately 20 K-5 students from the Morgansville Elementary Attendance Zone to become part of the new West City Elementary. The two areas that encompass these 20 students, or projected to be 20 students, are primarily farm areas. It basically picks up the areas that are on Broadfording, McDade, and portions of Salem Avenue that are very close to the new facility. When the Committee looked at this, it kind of made sense from a transportation perspective to be able to transport them down to the new West City Elementary School and to create future potential options. The second portion of it is located close to Greencastle Pike, so they would basically come down off Greencastle Pike and hop on US 40 and go right over to the new West City Elementary School. It's a little bit of an odd shape because our boundaries are based on parcel lines, but when you get out in rural or farm areas, that tends to be kind of the nature of creating some of those attended zones. So, with that, the new West City Elementary School will basically look, as shown on the screen here, where the school was situated to the east of the, what looks to be the primary area of the zone. Of course, when you look at this, you keep in mind that, you know, the majority of students are located in the Hager's Crossing Development, where we have 155 students that would be non-transported. There's a large density of students that are located just below US 40. As you can see, the zone pretty much follows US 40 out to the Conica Jig Creek, which again is approximately five miles from the school. And then, the boundary on the east is set by Interstate 81 with a couple portions heading over into the city of Hagerstown to pick up those students there. With that, I think we would constitute, this is the end of Group One, and if we want to go through any questions, the members of the FIAC and myself would be happy to do our best to provide answers.
Questions on the Group One draft? Mr. Brightman?
Paul, Chad, real quick. Page 14 of One Boundary, Boundary Recommendation Number Two, which was fine. Those deals were fine with me, but I'm just curious, I'm looking at hibiscus in that circle, some division. Can't remember off the top. It has hibiscus, costco, white pines, and zalea, I think it is, up there. It's on page 14, right here. It's outside of the boundary zone, but it abuts. You know what I'm looking at?
Yeah, part of the, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right off, maybe Hibiscus Parkway gets us to it.
Right there.
Can you just pull the microphone closer to you? I'm just looking at, do you know off the top of your head how many students are in that particular subdivision? And are they right now at Williamsport Elementary?
They are. Unfortunately, I don't know it off the top of my head, but it was one of the areas that the Committee looked at.
Right.
Around 50, if I remember correctly.
Around 50?
I believe it was around 50. It was...
And that might answer my question because I, you know, I'm thinking of Williamsport being, them being part of Williamsport, Williamsport being fairly overcrowded, and I was wondering, you know, if it was less than that, I'm thinking that wouldn't that make sense to move those, that particular Group Two, since it already abuts, you know, this new layout that, yeah.
I think one of the things that we looked at was that area, but if we took those 50 students, that would also put us over capacity at West City.
Right.
And we didn't want to open a school with overcapacity. So, those students were going to just stay at the Williamsport, and we did some other relief for Williamsport. That was a fewer number of students.
Yeah, when you said 50, that kind of was the red light because, but that was just curious that that, you know, it was so close. And I knew there were significant probably number of kids in that particular subdivision because it's kind of an entry-level housing subdivision, which typically has children.
Depending upon what happens long-term, I think the Committee looked at if West City ever became a five-round school.
That would be a very simple way.
Depending on where there's other development going on, it might be another opportunity, for instance, a relief for Williamsport.
And one other one, real quick, I'm just curious because, and I'm looking now, sorry, page 17, that, you said, how many of those kids go to, I mean, it just seems like, this one didn't make a lot of sense because it says Lincolnshire Attendance Zone. From Lincolnshire to West City? How many, I mean, where are those kids coming from? It seems significantly away from Lincolnshire.
The page isn't numbered.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Chad, my fault, friend. It's on this one. It would be Boundary Realignant Recommendation Number Three, Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone realigned to West City. And I'm trying to figure out how those kids ever got to Lincolnshire in the first place.
Yes, sir.
It's out of West Lawn, McDade, and, you know...
It is a little bit of ways away from the current Lincolnshire. Let me back up here. So, if you look at the entire Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone Boundary, as you can see, it is quite to the north of the existing facility. I'm going to look over to Patrick Holden in the back, but I believe this portion was redistricted from Conica Jig to Lincolnshire in 2010. Is that correct? Got my data right?
Yeah, that's probably right, yeah.
So, to provide enrollment relief at the time to Conica Jig Elementary School. So, in effect, along with, like I said, some of the transportation aspects that we discussed when we looked at some of the roadways and the density of the population, it would essentially be returning some of these students with some of the other Conica Jig students that they used to attend the facility with.
Yeah, makes perfect sense. That one, that obviously makes perfect sense, but I was just curious.
Right.
How they got sent far away from Lincolnshire in the first place.
The other thing that I think we looked at within that, really, even though it looks like a larger area, there are not many students that come from that area because of the industry and that, particularly in that lower section down there.
Right. I mean, the only residential area right there is that one little corner that has, you know, Delwood and some of the others streets. I mean, the rest of it is pretty much, except along West Washington Street. Thanks, that answered it very well. Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Brightman?
Yeah, just a couple broad. You said that everything, all the meetings and information has been placed on the website. I was wondering if you've been able to track the hits to the website, whether there have been comments along the way as far as the process, and have those all been documented?
I can't speak to the number of hits on the meetings, however, I can speak to the correspondence during this process. We've received, I believe, two phone calls. One actually that did not have anything to do with the redistricting process, that was just in general. But one that did deal with the redistricting process, that information was provided to the FIAC, was someone that was questioning a, one of the moves in Group Two. And then, there was an email correspondence, and both of those correspondences were provided to the Committee, and I believe they were also put in the minutes, if I remember correctly.
Yes, they were.
And we had, I think we had one parent come to one of the meetings and ask a question, and...
If I recall, the question was about whether the fifth graders would be grandfathered in with these particular proposals.
Has anyone sort of tested the website to see how easy it is to navigate? Is there a live link from the very first page of the website? I mean, we've heard over several redistrictings that there was some difficulty in finding the page. I was just wondering if...
For instance, the progress report, I have it pulled up, Mary just pulled it up. As soon as you go to our homepage, on the right side under Quick Links, and on the left side, both the very top leaders are FIAC, and you instantly go to the FIAC list, and towards the top of that, it says Progress Report. So, this is, this item is readily available there. I think we have...
I think it's number two on the flashing screen.
Perfect, great. And I know everything in here is state-rated capacity. Have we done comparison with local-rated? Because I know as a system, we find that an important part of having a high percentage of free and reduced male students.
Right. We worked within the state-rated capacities for the Committee just to keep it simplified. The reason we did that was because the local-rated capacity is obviously 90 percent of state-rated capacity. So, if we started changing the percentages to 100 percent of local-rated capacity, it would really be 90 percent of state-rated capacity. So, to simplify it, when we first met, when we first started this process, we explained the local-rated capacity to the Committee. I shouldn't say explained it, re-explained it to them, and decided that we would work with the state-rated capacity numbers with the goal of trying to get to 90 percent, which would be 100 percent of local-rated capacity. And that was essentially the process that we utilized. We were between 90 to 96 at all remaining 12 facilities, so we would be between 100 to 106 percent of local-rated capacity at those facilities based on the current proposals and current projections, other than Williamsport Elementary, which, as we've noted, would be 102 percent of state-rated capacity.
The reason I ask, I think this is just an interim report, and I understand that, but when it becomes an official report, it might be helpful to have that overlay of the local-rated somehow, and I'm not sure how to show that.
The numbers are there. Because they're using state-rated capacity, when you see 90 percent, you're looking at a school that's 90 percent.
But do we have that explanation somewhere in the documents so the public can understand what we're, that's my only recommendation.
We will include that in the final document to the Board. I think it might be addressed in the methodologies too. If not, in the methodologies for the progress report, I'm certain it's in the...
I just didn't see at first glance on the interim report a mention of local-rated capacity. And I know that's part of a, part of the decision process that we'll have to make.
Okay.
And just one other, if you look at the final page, and my report isn't numbered, very final total, there we go, back...
Oh, back one, okay.
If you go all the way to the westernmost region of this district, and what is helpful because this becomes an issue also with redistricting, is travel times. If we have on a comment page or something, some way of calculating an average travel time under normal circumstances, whatever, from points furthest away from the school they would be attending, that sort of answers that question proactively.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
During deliberations in the FIAC, was there any thought given to pre-K being a factor in any of this at a later date?
We touched on that at the very beginning of the process, and of course, we also discussed it during the recent Educational Facility Master Plan process and our continuing Educational Facility Master Plan updates throughout the year. At this point, without clear legislation on exactly what a mandated pre-K program might be, we didn't want to go down the route of leaving capacity or making a bunch of changes only to have to come back and to make additional changes in the future without really knowing what those changes would have to be. As far as maybe to clarify the adjusted state-rated capacities without pre-K, because we're working with attendance zone boundaries, the Committee looked at saying, pre-K programs are not subject to attendance boundaries. It's basically set up based on capacity. So, that's why everything in the report right now has been adjusted for the state-rated capacity of the K through 5, as well as the projected enrollments for the K through 5. So, let me maybe better clarify that. On a pre-K program, if there's 30 available seats, those... On a pre-K program, if there's thirty available seats, those thirty students do not necessarily have to reside within that district. So if we're looking and counting towards attendance boundaries, to try to come up with a, a, a number to get to our ninety to ninety-six percent, we don't want to include those students because a stu-, a pre-K student from Hancock could essentially be in a pre-K program in Boonsboro, based on capacity of that program. If the parent were working Boonsboro, they would travel with the parent. If there was capacity in that program, it would fill up. There's, there's a waiting list for those programs. So in order, like I said, to keep it kind of an apples to apples and to go with just good numbers, we went through and, and looked just at the K through five enrollments and projections.
Chad, I think that to Mr. Bailey's point, I think you're really referring to legislation that would require, forget attendance, go to attendance zone boundaries. Every child would have the potential attending pre-K.
Right.
Would be different. I think what the committee did, as I looked through the report, as they tried to level enrollment, they've also provided the best possible adjustment for additional space for pre-K. They didn't completely fill up any one school that, that knocked it out of potential pre-K or, you know, by leveling the enrollment based on the twelve schools involved in this redistricting plan, I think they provided some space or equal pain for implementing pre-K. I think if pre-K legislation's passed, I think we're going to see it come in much like kindergarten did, it'll be phased in over a number of years, and we'll have to react to that at this point. But I think with the, the committee leveling enrollment the best they can between that ninety and ninety-six, with the exception of Williamsport, they provided for that. Also, you'll notice if you really look tight into numbers, those programs that already have half-day pre-K or all-day pre-K, those numbers have been kind of factored out. So those spaces are still reserved at the schools with pre-K moving forward. So we'll be ready to make a transition there for at least half-day pre-K for programs that already exist. But your point's well taken. We're going to have that pain across the county, much like we did with implementing full-day K when that comes.
Thank you for your response.
Other questions? Mrs. Fisher?
This isn't, it's related to redistricting, but it's not, but I thought I'd ask it now because we're dealing with Conica Jig area. There are quite a few portables at Conica Jig. Are we going to be using those next year, or when West City opens, you think, or?
We'll evaluate the condition of the portables, much like we did with Bester, and those that are in good shape, we probably will repurpose, probably to manage some of our middle school and high school growth and/or the potential of it, the pre-K program mandated, and/or if we choose to expand it on our end, we would probably take advantage of the portables at that point.
Do you think most of them are usable?
Are you asking a question, or are you making a statement?
No, are most, do you think most of those?
I, we have an assessment. We assess the portables every year, so I'd probably have to defer to Mark, to Mark Mills. But we, we do know the condition of each of the portables. We've actually, for some of those that have a steel structure, we've actually rebuilt some of the portables from the ground back up and made good use of them.
Other questions?
I have just one sort of broader picture question. The last time we did a, I'd say a major redistricting across the county at the elementary level was, must have been two thousand and ten, eleven school years when it started, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So those students would have, would now be, I mean, students who were moved as part of that are still in elementary school, some of them are. Have we looked at whether areas that were rezoned at that point are being rezoned again now? Has that been part of any of your consideration or thoughts as you've looked across these various areas?
Internally, we looked at that. We did not necessarily look at it with the FIAC, because with, when we went through with the process with the committee, we wanted to look at what were the best options regardless, and just go through from a geographical standpoint, or, or from a capacity standpoint. As I had mentioned earlier, the Lincolnshire piece was two thousand and ten. So internally, when we looked at that, we said, okay, those students would have been six years ago. So the pre-kindergarten students would be fifth graders in two thousand and sixteen when there's the proposed recommendation. So in theory, there shouldn't be any students that would be closer than five years if the move occurred in two thousand and eleven, and the recommendation would take place in two thousand and sixteen. So if, if they were kindergartners, they should not be impacted when the recommendation would take place if they were in fifth grade, because they would be, I think, typically grandfathered in, unless, of course, it's in the Conica Jig or the Winter Street districts, which would be closing.
Okay, I think, I think I understand that.
Sorry.
No, I, I think I do. Grandfather, though, is a matter of, it's not in policy. That's simply part of the, of the special permission policy.
Yes, sir.
Which gives preference to those students, but I don't believe that it's in policy that all fifth-grade students who are, who've been, whose attendance zones have been realigned will be able to attend their other school. So if we wanted to guarantee that, that would take a specific, separate action by the board. Is that correct?
The board's done that before. We do allow that in the transportation policy. It's one of the reasons, or special permission policies you indicated. It's one of the reasons you can request, but it is based on capacity. But we have had before where the board has passed the recommendation, and then also said all fifth graders can remain at their school if they choose to do that and provide transportation. We do have, with Conica Jig and Winter Street closing, there'll be no fifth grade to remain for those, for those two school attendance zones.
Right. Okay, and maybe that's a more relevant question for group two or group three as.
It will be.
As, as we look at, because what, I mean, what my hope and part of the reason for wanting to take a broader look at the county is, I mean, let's just say, this is not a pleasant process for anybody, for the board, for the FIAC, I'm sure, or for the people who's, or for the families and children who are affected by it. I mean, this is one of the, I think, the most unpleasant things that a board has to do, although it's something that we do have to do because it's our responsibility to make sure that our facilities and our resources are used most effectively. So as we look countywide, which I think we did four years, five years ago as well, I want to be sure that we're trying to implement solutions for ten and fifteen years, not for three, four, and five years, so that we don't run into issues which, some, some are unavoidable. The Pangborn issue, you know, maybe we put too many in Pangborn than, more than we should have, I, I don't know. But I'd like to get to a point where if we're going to do this major look across the county, that this is going to resolve issues for the long term so that another board isn't here in four years having to go through the same process. So that's the reason I asked the question, and the reason I'll continue to ask the question as we go through the process.
And I think we couldn't agree with you more. The challenge is just, just a pop-up, Cortland Manor being a good one with Pangborn. We had no way of predicting that rapid change at Cortland Manor, you know, from our point, it took ten apartments to make one child, and we went pretty much to three children to, to four children coming out, you know, point three or point four coming out per apartment there, and that just completely, completely skewed what we, what we did in two thousand and ten. I think also, a lot of districts, I think even Frederick County, redistricts every single year because of the rapid growth that they experienced sometime. We definitely want to try to avoid that and forecast the very best we can to avoid those types of situations. But if we experience suddenly a, a development of, you know, four or five hundred homes over three or four years without something happening, you know, it may require something again. But absolutely, Doc Hardings, we agree.
And my last question, page, I guess page eleven, it's maybe the, I don't know how to refer to it other than page eleven. I guess it's. I think that's the, that's the map right there. What's, what's creating the boundary on the southern, I see the southern edge, but there's a vertical boundary that goes through, and it looks like it cuts through right in the middle of a street. Is there something, some natural barrier that's, is there a street there, or?
There is.
How did we pick that house?
There is not, that was, it, there was a, a parcel boundary line, but there is not a natural barrier at that location, like you would typically like to do. Basically, when the committee looked at it with us and we talked to the Transportation Department, that was one of the comments that came up, was would we need to service that area with potentially two buses? And we, we spoke to the Transportation Department, and they said they currently were in that area based on the number of students. And it just ended up being a, a, a boundary between two residences, and I think that's indicated in the description of the, I think it's on page eight, under the second portion.
Is there, is there no other way to reorganize that so that, you know, if I buy this house or the house next door, I, I go to different schools?
And.
So that it's, you know, people on this side of one street go to one school, and the other side of the street go to the other school? That seems to make more sense to me, just from continuity of communities.
We can certainly look into that a little closer when we come back with the final recommendation to see if we could maybe adjust that to find another location. One of the questions that came up during the FIAC process was, do we have that condition anywhere else in the county? We do. But we'll certainly go back and see if we can maybe find a little bit more of a, a natural boundary.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions on group one?
Could I add to that?
Sure.
On that same map, the non-contiguous nature of that, where a school bus would leave one district, go through another district to get to the, you know, final destination, I'm not sure what the projections are for that gap area.
Mrs. Brightman, I don't, I don't think that's a gap area.
Oh.
Correct. If you, if, that, the area that's in between is also being moved to West City.
It is being moved in the.
But it's on a different map. So if you go to the final map of the West City attendance area?
Where does that section?
There's, there's the final map.
Right, so.
Yeah, where does that section that we're just talking about?
So this is the portion of Salem Avenue. And it ties into.
Ah, okay, so it's just colored, got it, thank you. Do we have any non-contiguous areas in this final?
Is it all?
Possibly, there's a couple drop-down areas. The one you talked about, Mr. Bright, now would be one of those, the Williamsport. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else on group one? Okay.
Okay. Moving on to group two. Preliminary boundary realignment recommendation number five reassines approximately sixteen K through five students from the closing Conica Jig Elementary Attendant Zone to the Clear Spring Elementary Attendant Zone. Now, on this map, the existing Conica Jig Attendant Zone is shown in white. The light blue portion would be the area that would encompass the sixteen students that would go to the blue portion, which is the current Clear Spring Elementary Attendant Zone. When you look at the map, it shows up a little better on the closer area, but this is actually primarily bounded by the Conica Jig Creek. You can actually see the landfill on the far eastern portion of that area. So basically, the primary areas of residences are to the west of this area and reside along Rockdale Road. So while it looks like it would be a very easy commute over to the new West City, it actually, those students will have to travel west to get to Rockdale Road, and then come south to get down to US forty. Again, when we looked at this particular area, the committee looked at sending them how close that area would be to go to Clear Spring Elementary, which had a little bit of capacity, and was able to encompass the sixteen students that were proposing. Committee also considered that these particular students also currently attend the Clear Spring Middle School and Clear Spring High School in their future years. So that was part of the discussion that occurred around this particular area. Recommendation number six reassines approximately fifty-nine K through five students from the closing Conica Jig Elementary Attendant Zone to the Morgansville Elementary Attendant Zone. Again, you can see the white area that shows the Conica Jig Elementary Attendant Zone. The light green area is the portion that would be reassigned to Morgansville Elementary School. This basic, this area basically follows Gosserd Mill Road and goes over towards Greencastle Pike, and through the backroads would actually be a fairly easy commute based on the amount of transportation that we have in the northern portion of the existing Morgansville Elementary Attendant Zone. With these two particular recommendations, five, six, and recommendation four from group one, this would completely close out the Conica Jig Elementary Attendant Zone and redistribute those areas. Recommendation number seven would reassign approximately a hundred and seventy-six K through five students from the closing Winter Street Elementary Attendant Zone to the Salem Avenue Elementary Attendant Zone. And when we start getting further in this process, we had to go to a few more colors. The indigo or purple area is the existing piece of Salem Avenue that would be reassigned to West City Elementary, and we covered in group one. The blue portion is the existing, remaining portion of the Salem Avenue Elementary Attendant Zone, and the light blue portion shown in the Winter Street would be the area that would encompass where these students would then now attend Salem Avenue. It's basically the area north of West Washington Street and Washington Avenue. Many of these students will be non-transported or be able to walk to Salem Avenue Elementary based on discussions with our Transportation Department. Recommendation number eight would reassign seventy-five K through five students from the closing Conca Jig, uh, won't, excuse me, closing Winter Street Elementary School Attendant Zone to the Bester Elementary School Attendant Zone. As you can see in white, this is the southern portion that would be below, south of West Washington Street, and this would then go to the new Bester Elementary School that is opening this fall. This area looks a little out of place in this particular slide, but in group three, we will look at a recommendation for Lincolnshire that will pick up the little point there on the, the northeastern edge that kind of bisects the two zones at this point in time. Recommendation number nine would reassign approximately a hundred and five students from Ruth Ann Monroe Primary and Eastern Elementary School to Salem Avenue Elementary School. In this map, again, we have three different colors. We have the bir, or the indigo that would go to the new West City Elementary School, the blue that is the current Salem Avenue Elementary Attendant Zone, and then the light blue that's in the eastern Ruth Ann Monroe District, this area would be reassigned into Salem Avenue Elementary School. Basically, this area was reassigned, to our, to our future, or previous conversation, this area had been reassigned previously to Ruth Ann Monroe and Eastern Elementary during the last phase of redistricting, I believe, two thousand and eleven, if I remember correctly, to create capacity at Salem Avenue because of the Hager's Crossing development and some of the other developments in that region. When the committee looked at this, the, the FIAC, and Ms. Newby, Mr. Oliver, you feel free to step in, the committee really wanted to see these students go back to, or return to Salem Avenue Elementary School based on their proximity.
I think the other thing that you actually ran into there is, I think the principal at Salem Avenue actually made common, he had a lot of people from that area that actually were asking for special permission to go to Salem Avenue. I mean, so they wanted to come back to Salem Avenue.
That's correct.
Because they could walk. Correct.
Right. So just a brief summary of the group two enrollments. With the existing Conica Jig Elementary School, you can see on the map on screen, with the proposed changes in group one and group two, the green portion shown would now go to Morgansville Elementary, the blue portion would be reassigned to Clear Spring Elementary, and the indigo portion, again, was in group one, and would be part of the new West City Elementary School Attendant Zone. The existing Winter Street Elementary Attendant Zone would basically be split into two portions. The northern portion would go to the new Salem Avenue Elementary School, and the southern portion shown in blue would go to Bester Elementary School. And then Salem Avenue Elementary School, again, the two most western portions of that particular district would be reassigned to the West City Elementary School. And as you can see, it picks up the portions from Ruth Ann Monroe Primary and Eastern Elementary, which in addition to relieving some of the enrollment pressures that are projected to be facing those two facilities in two thousand and eighteen, it also creates a little bit more contiguous boundary along North, North Burrands Boulevard for Salem Avenue Elementary, along with picking up the students from Winter Street. With that, that is the completion of group two, and at this point in time, we'd be open for questions.
Questions on group two?
I, I knew I was going to have indigestion when I saw this part, and, and let me just philosophically put it out there, we're taking the Conica Jig community and dividing it three ways. put it out there. We're taking the Conica Jig community and dividing it three ways. Did we look at any other option? And one of those divisions only has 16 students, the 16 going to Clear Spring.
Uh huh.
And I know you said that they would remain in the same feeder group. What about the other two groups that would count on going to Clear Spring High School at the same? Will they be going back to that same feeder group?
They would continue to go to Clear Spring Middle School, Clear Spring High School, as well as the group that's gone to Morgansville. There's actually children in Morgansville that are part of Clear Spring Middle School and Clear Spring High Schools. That section that's gone to Morgansville will join other children that already go to Clear Spring High and Middle, and I don't think there's any consideration of changing any of that. So all those children will continue in their same feeder pattern to Clear Spring Middle and High.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
I believe when we get into group three, clear, or Conica Jig, because I had a concern about Conica Jig, I live near there, but I think there's going to be some other schools that are going to be split three ways.
Oh, I know, it's, I, yes.
Are there other questions? I have one on map 39. That's the group going to Bester. Does that create a non-contiguous district?
No, sir. In group three, we'll see the little point that will come up.
You may have said that, and I.
It's okay. It's an excellent point. I was concerned about the way that would show up as well. So, but yes, we will, at the end of the show, the new Bester Elementary Attendance Zone. I believe it'll be on a future map, and I'll point it out to show how it'll become contiguous.
Okay, great. Any other questions on group two?
Just a simple map. It looks like we're missing maybe 20 kids from Winter Street that didn't get redistricted.
Yes, that's a, that's a very good point to pick up, and I was expecting someone would say that. One of the things, when we looked at the groups, we see an existing 176 students at Winter Street, and we're going to redistrict those areas. Some of those students are special permissions in, so we did not count those students. And then also, if you look at the future projections, the future projections for Winter Street might not have always been this year's enrollment. They would go up and down a little bit as well. So between those two numbers, that creates the discrepancy that you're addressing. It's, it's an excellent catch-up.
If there are no other questions on group two?
I'd just like to say one thing about, we've, we've taken care of Winter Street, we've taken care of Conica Jig, and one of the considerations of the committee was that there might have been an expectation for both of those schools to go to the brand-new West City School. And that isn't necessarily what's going to happen to those students. However, many of those, or all of those students will be attending a newer facility. Some going to the new Bester, some going to the brand-new West City, some going to the newly renovated Salem Avenue. So those students will still be attending a school that is in much better shape than the current ones that they are attending, Winter Street and Conica Jig. So that was one of the considerations. We had some questions about whether there were some of those expectations from the students and the families there. And I think we talked to Matt one time, when he was still principal at Winter Street, about those considerations.
Thank you for pointing that out, because as, as one of the things that struck me is I look at the inventory of facilities, once the West City School is built, in the Hagerstown downtown area and surrounding area, when you look at Bester, the West City, Ruth Ann Monroe, Salem, which was recently renovated, there's really a nice core set of facilities in that area that, I know which child your, which school your child goes to is about more than just the facility, but in terms of just the facilities, boy, I wouldn't hesitate to have my children in any of those facilities. They're all really, I think, going to provide great opportunities for kids in those communities.
And it also didn't make sense to transport students from the current Winter Street across Salem Avenue boundaries to get to the new West City. That didn't make any sense, so.
I'll move on to group three. So the first two groups meet the requirement of the committee's charge and deal with the opening of the new West City Elementary School. Group three is not contingent on the opening of the new facility. So one of the things that we noted in the progress report is that while the charge requested these changes to occur in the 2016 school year, they could actually occur earlier if deemed appropriate. So that's one of the things that we pointed out on each of the recommendations. It's not a requirement, it's just something, they aren't contingent on another piece of the puzzle occurring for them to occur. So the first preliminary recommendation, number 10, would reassign approximately 38 K-5 students from Lincolnshire Elementary School to Bester Elementary School. So as Dr. Harding's had pointed out in the, the previous slide about the contiguous area of the Winter Street piece, this is the group that creates the new contiguous boundary for Bester Elementary. If you look at the existing Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone shown in white, again, the indigo portion would be that portion on the north that would go to West City, and the light blue portion would be the portion that would then be reassigned to Bester Elementary and then tie into the piece we just looked at with Winter Street. And I'll, I'll have another slide to show that, that more contiguous boundary here at the end of this group. This area basically encompasses Ridge Avenue, Claire Street, and Brewer Avenue. I believe the railroad tracks are kind of to the south of this area, and you can kind of see it a little closer on the world imagery map that we provided. Yeah, there we go. Recommendation number 11 would reassign approximately 46 K-5 students from Lincolnshire Elementary School Attendance Zone to the Fountain Rock Elementary School Attendance Zone. This map's a little harder to see because the districts get a little larger. So on the existing Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone, which is shown in white again, I don't need to reiterate the, where the purple portion's going, or the indigo portion. The blue portion, again, would then go to Bester. But in the lower right-hand corner, there's a small little orange area. That's the area that we're looking at. That area would then be reassigned to Fountain Rock Elementary School, which has capacity and would offer additional enrollment relief to Lincolnshire Elementary that it, that it needs in order not to see the 115% of state-rated capacity that's currently projected to be. This particular area includes the Oak Ridge Apartments, you know, and it basically follows Downsville Pike. So for, for those maybe not so familiar with it, if you come out of the, the central office here and you go north, by the time you hit Dunkin' Donuts, basically, you've got the Oak Ridge Apartments on your left and a few of the apartments on the right. That, those students would then drive down Downsville Pike a couple miles to Fountain Rock and an instant left, and it would fill up the capacity at that facility. On the map, again, you can see, I'm familiar with the Dunkin' Donuts because I like to go there for the coffee, but there's also a couple other areas in that area, and basically includes apartment complexes to the north of Downsville Pike and to the south. I believe the Health Center there is on there as well. It's the green building right off of the exit 70 there, so. The next recommendation is recommendation number 12, which would reassign approximately 43 K-5 students from the Williamsport Elementary Attendance Zone to Fountain Rock Elementary School. Again, the, the map's a little small because the districts are very large. The light orange portion in the right lower corner of the existing Williamsport Elementary would be the area that we're looking at, that would be reassigned to Fountain Rock Elementary Attendance Zone, which is shown in orange. This area includes the Sterling Oaks Housing Development. Basically, it's the development that's along Sterling Road, which is, comes out on the Downsville Pike just north of our entrance. Again, they would come right down Downsville Pike and go over to Fountain Rock. It basically goes over and picks up Edward Dow Road. This particular move, moving 43 students, would provide that enrollment relief to Williamsport Elementary, which is currently projected to go up to about 109%. And this was one of the moves that would get them down to 102% of state-rated capacity. Culinary realignment recommendation number 13 would reassign approximately 38 K-5 students from Pangborn Elementary School Attendance Zone to the Potomac Heights Elementary School Attendance Zone. This is somewhat of a continuation of the committee's initial recommendation from last year. If you look at the map of the Pangborn Elementary Attendance Zone, you can see that this portion, it's a little hard to pick up because it's in yellow, it's on the left central portion of Pangborn, and would be reassigned back to Potomac Heights. This portion basically creates a little bit more contiguous boundary for Potomac Heights, which on the map is shown in yellow, basically kind of squares off the lower streets there and would encompass about 38 students. This picks up North Mulberry Street and Wayside Avenue essentially, but creates a little bit more of a contiguous area for that particular district while providing some additional enrollment relief for Pangborn Elementary School. The final recommendation is recommendation number 14, and this is a little bit more of an administrative suggestion. This particular recommendation would reassign approximately four 6th through 8th graders from Northern Middle School Attendance Zone to Western Heights Middle School Attendance Zone. So in, in the new software that we've been utilizing with the committee, one of the first things we picked up on was this particular island, that if you look on the map, you can see it resides within the Western Heights District. The, the yellow portion at the top of the page, there's about four 6th through 8th middle school students in that area, and the committee is recommending that we maybe dissolve that and return that to the Western Heights Attendance Zone so that we don't have to send a, a bus up there to pick up those particular students. It basically includes North Ridge Drive, North Meadow Road, North Valley Drive, and North Crest Road. Again, it's a very small area, does not impact the high school feeder attendant zone, but it maybe cleans it up a little bit from an administrative side of the house. So in review of group three, to go back to the existing Bester Elementary School Attendance Zone, as you can see on the map, this is the current Bester Elementary Attendance Zone. And with the proposed modifications, you can see it would create a contiguous boundary up to the northwest by picking up portions of Winter Street and Lincolnshire. The existing Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone, with the current proposed recommendations, would have three components. It would have one, shown in indigo, going to the new West City Elementary School. The blue portion would then be reassigned to Bester Elementary School, and the orange portion in the bottom would be reassigned to Fountain Rock Elementary School, again, as part of bringing their projected enrollment from 115% of state-rated capacity down to, I believe it's 95% of state-rated capacity. So the new Lincolnshire Elementary Attendance Zone would look a little bit more compact than what it currently does. The Williamsport Elementary Attendance Zone would lose, it's kind of hard to see, but it's just the smaller southeast corner, which would then be reassigned to the Fountain Rock Elementary Attendance Zone. And again, the existing Fountain Rock Elementary Attendance Zone would change and pick up the portion from Williamsport and the portion from Lincolnshire that we addressed. Potomac Heights Elementary Attendance Zone, if you watch kind of the bottom of the screen, you'll see that it's currently proposed to pick up a small portion from Pangborn, shown in yellow, and then the Pangborn Elementary Attendance Zone would lose that small portion to Potomac Heights. So the net result of the proposed recommendations that we show from an elementary standpoint, again, takes the projected capacities that we had shown between 64% up to 115% and redistributes them between 90% to 96% of adjusted state-rated capacity, again, with the exception of Williamsport Elementary School, which we brought down to 102%. Total number of students impacted by the current proposed recommendations are 999 students. One of the things I'd like to point out about that is that of that 999 students, that represents about 10% of our elementary, projected elementary enrollment in 2018. It's about nine and a half percent of the students will be impacted. So it sounds like a lot. But then, when you look at the Conica Jig and the Winter Street districts that you're, that are projected to be closed in 2016, and if we were to subtract out the Hager's Crossing development, which would be the non-transported students for the new West City Elementary School, the net total of students impacted by these proposed elementary changes would be 421 K-5 students, less than four and a half percent of our elementary population, and we've, we've helped alleviate some of the enrollment pressures and capacities at the schools we have shown on screen. With that, I think, take questions for group three.
Questions? Ms. Fisher?
Do we know how many middle schools West City will split into?
Yes, it's.
I believe Chad, the Salem and Winter Street was Salem portions that go to West City would likely be part of the South High feeder district. The portions coming from Conica Jig would be part of the Clear Spring Middle, Clear Spring High feeder districts. So Chad, I guess it's the Lincolnshire piece that goes in. There'd be question on?
Yes.
We didn't include that in the progress report, but the committee has been reviewing the feeder options as part of the process. I was going back and looked through my notes. I, I think I know the answer, but I don't want to say something that's incorrect, so I wanted to check it real fast to make certain that I was accurate.
Maybe we'll go on to other questions, let Chad take some time to look that up.
Yeah, I believe, as of right now, we would anticipate them feeding into Clear Spring Middle, Springfield Middle, and Western Heights Middle. So it would be a three-middle-school feeder pattern, and then it would go into the Clear Spring High, South Hagerstown High, and Williamsport High, high school pattern. And I wanted to be certain before I told you, because I thought the number was correct, but just wanted to make sure I was accurate.
Still more of the feeder school question, and you may have answered part of it, but I sort of lost track. Lincolnshire is being split two ways to Bester and to Fountain Rock. Does that change their feeder pattern for those Lincolnshire families?
For the families that are in those areas, the intention was not to change the, those areas are still, when you look at the middle school and the high school redistricted.
Would it all still be the same?
District areas are still the same.
It would be helpful. I don't know how you would do a feeder pattern overlay, but that's always something parents ask. It's, it's a big concern and issue. Somehow, we could add that.
We, we can do that. We can also, I have Mr. Holden back here, we can bring that up on our GIS system, if he switches over here in a second. I can have him put the middle school boundaries and the proposed areas up on screen, and we can look at it. Lincolnshire currently feeds to Springfield Middle and Western Heights, as well as South Hagerstown High and Williamsport High. So basically, the new West City component.
The Bester and the Fountain Rock, Lincolnshire splitting, some of those students will be split between those two. Does that change their feeder?
So the children from Winter Street going to Bester would continue to be in part of the South High feeder district. That little tip of Lincolnshire, I guess, would be the question.
And for whatever it's worth, this software program?
Is awesome.
Is great. And it, I think it's going to help, whatever, it's going to help parents and the communities better understand.
As you can see, just by the maps that we've done, it's been a big help just to be able to orient some of the areas. It's, it's been a welcome addition. We, we've certainly enjoyed using it. I've had a lot of fun learning on it. Mr. Holden, obviously, is the other technician with it.
I'd actually made comment there with the FIAC committee, how that software has really made this process work so much easier. I mean, it's, just seems to me like, and I know it probably was a lot of dollars from the board's standpoint, but it really made that go a lot easier, and I think the accuracy is going to be much better. And obviously, then, should just be able to, like exactly what you were trying to say with the high school feeder patterns, middle school feeder patterns, to just be able to see.
You can ask that question.
Yes, and you can put it right there, and the parent can see, oh, well, that doesn't really affect, because even the one parent that came to one of our meetings, asked a very simple question, was answered, they were totally satisfied with what was going on. question, was answered, they were totally satisfied with what was going on, and basically were able to feel confident when they left. So, I think the system is wonderful.
Because Jackie and I both have served on FIAC, and you'd ask a question about what if we did that, and it would be the next meeting, and staff would have to go back and then come back again, and you could do it probably in a couple minutes, so...
So, thank you for allowing me to have, and Mary helped me find where we had actually looked at it with the committee and looked at the feeder patterns. The Lincolnshire portion that you were talking, requesting information about, currently Lincolnshire has a split feeder pattern to Springfield Middle and Western Heights Middle, as well as South Heggers Town High and Williamsport High. That portion going to Bester would then go to the E. Russell Hicks and South High feeder district, so...
And the group going to Fountain Rock would be changed to Williamsport, wouldn't it? So, there is a change there.
There are a couple modifications, the group going...
Was there a two-way split on that one?
I think the intention would be right now that it would not change, didn't change any secondary boundaries.
Unless we realign a middle school or a high school boundary, wherever you live now, you're still going to the same middle and high school after we realign the elementary school.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Except for the recommendation fourteen.
Just the one recommendation.
Except for the one.
But the high school would remain the same, to your point, so...
But if you're a student who is going to Lincolnshire, and now you're going to Fountain Rock, whatever middle and high school you were going to when you were going to Lincolnshire, you're still going to after you go to Fountain Rock.
So, for the, let me, let's do...
I just want to be sure I'm right, because that's what I, that's my assumption in all of this.
I'll go back and give a good example. So, this particular area from Lincolnshire that's proposed to go to Fountain Rock, currently this area goes to Springfield Middle and Williamsport High. Lincolnshire itself has a split feeder pattern, where it sends students to Springfield Middle and Western Heights Middle, as well as South Heggers Town High and Williamsport High. But these particular students going from, that currently go to Springfield Middle and Williamsport High, even when they change just the elementary attendant zone to go to Fountain Rock Elementary, they'll still go to Springfield Middle and Williamsport High, which are the only feeder patterns for Fountain Rock Elementary. So, we're not introducing an additional feeder pattern in that particular move.
As long as we don't change middle and high school boundaries, based on your address, you still go to the same middle school and high school. Now, you may be going to an elementary school with students who are going to go to more other middle schools and high schools, but the school you're going to go to is going to stay the same.
Yes, sir.
In Chad's example here, it just happens that it maintains Fountain Rock as a pure feeder, still going to Springfield Middle School, because these children already go to Springfield Middle School and Williamsport High School.
Mrs. Williams, you look perplexed.
Well, I was just thinking what the impact will be then, as these kids move through the elementary schools, once these changes are made, what will be the impact then of middle school and the high school? You know, will we eventually need to look at secondary?
I think the only way that would happen, Melissa, is if the population changes in those areas.
In those areas?
Yeah, I mean, right now, we have not touched a high school or a middle school boundary, so therefore, those kids, you know, they know right now, if they were going to Springfield, that's where they're going to continue to go.
So, I guess what I'm saying, then Wayne, is that we're satisfied that these kids move through, there will be capacity in their schools that are, they're currently feeding into there, but then with what we're thinking about doing boutique-wise and otherwise, that will all play into it as well.
So, that capacity, the domino.
So, I was just looking at how this is going to push up.
Right.
I think it all depends on what happens as far as growth is concerned in a particular area. Then you have to address that one.
I may be wrong, but I thought I just saw an advertisement for a new development opening in Williamsport. And I can't think of the name of it, but I know I saw it.
It's not additional homes at Elmwood Farms or something like that?
No, it's a different spot.
Yeah.
I can't pull it off the top of my head, I saw it, but I cannot...
I have no idea how large it is.
It's proposed, it's not, you know, it's a minor subdivision, because I think it's outside of Williamsport, may not have ordered soon.
It's outside, but...
We're watching any number of potential developments, I mean, there's some in concept phase way back, there's a development there Chad mentioned the other day of like five-hundred-and-fifty homes. You suddenly have that take off or something like that, everything changes again. Much like Heggers Crossing drove what we did at Salem to try to relieve that, you know, that can happen almost anywhere over the next couple of years, could affect what we're doing.
Mrs. Hartman?
I had a question about M.A.K. Dow, do we have the information, the numbers on that?
I'm sorry, on M.A.K. Dow?
M.A.K. Dow.
Not in this particular...
I could find it in there, so...
Not in this progress report, I think we provided that in the other, the recent enrollment projections that we sent out.
That was way back in, that was under enrollment. They have state-rated capacities, two ninety-nine, locals, two sixty-nine, and two thousand and twelve was two fifty-seven, so... Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
I'm looking back at the chart on page six. Williamsport at one hundred and two percent, couldn't we move two more percent to Fountain Rock, that's not going to be at ninety-four?
A big portion of what's going on at Williamsport is a changing, is a change in what's going on with the magnet program. So, what could happen is, our demographer has projected that that change will continue to occur, meaning more children will in-migrate to Williamsport, to the magnet program. At one time, the majority of the magnet program students were Williamsport students. As that changed to non-Williamsport Elementary students to be part of the magnet program, that in-migration created growth. So, in Chad's, one of his comments, that one hundred and two percent could mitigate itself if that flattens out a little bit and/or if more Williamsport students are part of the magnet program. I think, again, as we pointed out earlier, maybe Mary stated it, another opportunity, what Mr. Reddiner pointed out, what if another portion there up around the pilot station, around that area, went to West City in a future redistricting, if that ever moved to a five-round score, if there's other changes could occur. But Chad also pointed out, will be forty-some children less if these projections are created in twenty-eighteen than they are today. So, it'll be a substantial amount of relief over where they are today, plus we're adding the portable, or we've added a portable mid-year here at Williamsport Elementary.
I've got one other question. Has there been one large map prepared with what all the new elementary...
Not at this point in time, not one with the new attendant zones. We've done several maps where we've shown the resultant boundaries and all the proposed areas. Pat, if you want to, unfortunately, it looks like it's just on the screen behind you, but I'll have him turn on just the areas that we're proposing. We can certainly go in after this meeting and create that map, but we have...
But this is Fisher's point, we do have a map that shows as if these were all approved, you know, we do have a map that demonstrates what all the new boundaries would look like, school by school.
Are there other questions? Well, that's being pulled up. I have a big-picture question. There's sort of two ways, I guess, one could, well, let me step back. The last time we went through this process, it was when Ruth Ann Monroe was being built and then opened. We're doing it now because we have another new school that's being opened and two schools that are being closed. So, the facilities construction process forces us to do, to go through this process. According to the educational facilities master plan that we're going to consider this afternoon in the business meeting, the only new elementary project that really is going to add any capacity is, over the next almost ten years in that draft, is the Sharpsburg Project, which is pretty obvious where the students for that attend, for that expanded capacity would come from. So, as I look at the facilities plan now, we've got probably ten to twelve years where it looks like we're not going to have to go through this process because we're building a new school that we have to fill. So, to me, that seems like we have somewhat of an opportunity here to try to get the entire county-wide picture right, where we may not have to adjust it so much as we move forward. So, with all that as background, there's two ways, I guess, you can go through the process, both as a committee and as staff supporting the committee. You can do it in sort of a micro way, which is, this school's over, that school's under, move some of these children here. You could also approach it in a more macroscopic way, which would be to say, here's where all of our twenty-seven elementary schools are, or whatever the number is, here's where all of our students are. If I could throw out the old map, how would I use each of the schools, and what would their attendant zones look like? Have you gone through that latter exercise? Because I think we have an opportunity, given where we are in our facilities planning process, to do that now.
I think internally, staff, we've looked at a couple other options of how we might do something like that, would probably affect a little over two thousand, twenty-five-hundred children. I think also, as we've looked across the county, I think the committee, as they've looked across the county, we're not seeing the need maybe to try to make it perfect right now, because, like I said, suddenly a two or three hundred home housing development comes into plan, it's just, it'll be unlikely we're going to sit still for ten years and not have to redistrict again, with obviously the exception of South County.
I understand that, but based on, based on what we know now, is the recommendation that, and this isn't final, this is preliminary, is the recommendation that you're going to bring us based on, how do we fix this, how do we fix that, or have you taken a, if I could set up the attendant zones based on the geography of where our schools are across the county, if I could set them up the way with a blank slate, is that the approach you've taken, or will take?
I believe the committee took the approach of the micro scale, and Mr. Alver, Ms. Newby, step in if I'm speaking out of turn here, but one of the things we heard from the committee at the start of this process is, they wanted to have the biggest impact, but impact the least number of people. And that was one of the overlying factors, you know, as they looked through the areas, if they could avoid moving or going to the macro version as you, as you described it, if they could keep it on a more microscopic scale and create capacity and provide relief, they chose that particular method, and that's the way we moved forward and the recommendations that we reviewed.
Well, we also, and thanks to the Transportation Department for addressing some of the things that, when you look at, you know, it looks like it might make sense to move some kids from somewhere, but the, how you get them on the bus and out, you know, that comes into play. And so, we made, we made sure that we looked at the transportation aspect, making sure that we had schools that were now populated at their greatest capacity without overpopulating those schools. We also did take into consideration some of the farm rates for those students, we met in closed session to really look at those. And we need to make sure that we're making the smartest decisions for the students that would be impacted, and I think we took care of most of those issues.
I mean, I do agree, I mean, I think we were really looking at, and I feel, and appreciate your all's time here and the input you've given us, I do feel, you know, we've gone from that span of sixty-four percent capacity to one hundred and fifteen percent capacity and brought that down into, with all the schools, between ninety and ninety-six, and then we even, with Williamsport Elementary, went from one hundred and nine to one hundred and two to bring that in line. I think we did look to impact as few as students as possible, and at the same time, try to make that larger impact within all of the schools in the county to make that work. As was mentioned about transportation, I mean, I think there are some things where, when you look at just almost that aspect of, you know, concentric circles around schools and some of the transportation things didn't take, have to be taken into consideration, because I know when we looked at the one section of Conica Jig, it really came down to, you know, it was kind of close to Morgansville, but at the same time, the way that worked, they were going to have to come down to forty, and then at that point, they'd have to make a right or left turn to go to either Clear Spring or West City, you know, so I think, I think a lot of those things really impacted the overall total. So, even though I think we did probably look more at the individual basis of a lot of those schools, in general, it probably looked more at the total of all of that to make those numbers work, because as we dealt with one school and it became a larger percentage, and then we looked at another school and said, well, I think we can alleviate this school over here, and I think that's where we were able to take some of those students with Ruth Monroe back, and then we moved, because I know I had to ask a specific question on some of the students there that were coming and going down to Fountain Rock from the Oak Ridge area, well, why can't we take them, you know, over here, it looks like would be a shorter distance? And obviously, even from a transportation standpoint, then it became, well, we're going to have to go across a bridge, and it's a single-lane bridge, and that's actually going to take longer, even though it appears shorter. You know, all of those types of things tie back together within that. The other thing that I noticed that we had talked about, that I feel real positive about in that, as we look at, and clearly, we have to look at parents and what their input and what they say, at the same time, I think we have to say, you know, we are really, and you had mentioned that comment, taking these students and providing them much nicer facilities, even the ones that are not going to, quote, new schools, they are going to much newer schools in general than what they've ever been, and I think that'll be a positive. So, I mean, I see overall as what we're doing, the public needs to be aware that this is an improvement for their student and for their student's education, and I just see it as an overall positive movement within the system that way.
I want to thank you, because I think the FIAC Committee, and I think to a large degree, staff feel that taking transportation, taking free and reduced lunch rates, taking all of the demographic information, we know we've optimized the attendant zones. But I think to Dr. Harding's point, sometimes when you start with kind of a fixed set of assets and a fixed set of assumptions, you miss opportunities. So, one of the things that I'd like to ask staff to do outside of the FIAC process, given the new software, is what if you did start over? How much time might it take you to simply say, I don't have attendant zone one, I don't have a transportation department, Barb Scotto is not in the room, what if I just wanted to optimize my facilities and set kids in places? Would it look significantly different in terms of the overall numbers at schools? And so, you know, maybe what you could do is reflect upon that and not give us an answer now, Chad, but think a little bit about that and think, well, what would that look like? How much time would that entail? You could do some fun things for us in that way, too. One thing you could look at, I hear parents say to me, why do you have Eastern Elementary School and Ruth Ann Monroe as separate facilities, a half a block apart from each other, that have different grade configurations? You've heard me sometimes talk about how many little kids are on that one campus, well, what if we turned them both into K-fives and did something like that? I was just at Hancock High last week, and a English teacher, I believe it was an English teacher, stopped me in the hall and said, you know, there are two things that you have to do, Superintendent. And I said, well, there's probably more than two, but what are the two that you think I should do? And she said, number one, we need an assistant principal, and number two, we need more kids. Now, I know what she meant, she meant that I had to draw a different attendance line to get more kids into Hancock, because we had in fact excluded the kids who were coming over from Allegheny, and so their numbers dropped. And she sees the writing on the wall, that they can't offer some of the courses that they want to offer because they don't have the instructional resources, and I don't think she's fully bought into our web-based applications that we're having kids take some advanced placement courses, they're now using the technology. That said, this kind of playing, if you will, might give you an opportunity to come back and say to Dr. Hardings or others, it's not significantly different, or here's where there was a major difference. So, why don't you think about it a little bit, and maybe the next time we get together, we can arrange some conversation with board members who are interested about what it would start to start at ground zero.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Just one thing, real...
Just one thing, real quickly, and thank you, guys. This is, I mean, what I'm seeing here is maybe the most, the least disruptive realignment that I've seen since I've, in 10 years I've been here and through three, I guess, redistrictings. And when we're talking about 15, I think up there, 15 schools that have been impacted, yet it does not appear to be, you know, I'm not seeing things, there may be a couple of controversies as we go along, but overall, it makes sense. Everything makes sense, and I like the fact that we now have these contiguous areas and that I think will serve our, serve our kids very well. I'm impressed. Thank you for your efforts. It was, it was very well done. Any other comments from board members?
I, too, want to thank the members of the FEAC. I know it's a lot of work to serve on that committee, but I think you can see today it's important work. And I would just invite the Taylor and Mary, do you have any other comments you'd like to make on the process, where you think you are, or anything you think the board should know?
Well, I know that behind the scenes, Chad and his department had, has done a lot of work for us to make this process a lot easier. And with this new program, it's easy to see an exact, there's this many kids on this street, and, and transportation was there to support us. So there was a lot of behind-the-scenes activities that really made this work easier.
Correct. Because the one thing the program really did, and Don had made that comment, and I agree wholeheartedly, that aspect of, you know, looking at a recommendation and being able to instantaneously see, if we do this, how many students will be impacted, what will happen, and that really made, made that work a lot better for us, and I think...
What ifs?
Yep. Very impressive.
And if you remember, that was a board decision just a little over a year ago to purchase that new software that Chad and the team now abuse, so we thank the board for that.
And I think it's an example, too, for the public, and, you know, we bought, we bought business software, we approved the purchase of business software at the last meeting, which was more expensive than the least expensive option, but I think here's an example where an investment in that kind of technology really has an impact on kids and on the way we function. So a couple extra dollars spent upfront, I think, provide a better service for the people we serve and provide better tools for the people who really do the hard work, which is, you know...
But I think it's easy for parents, if they access this on our website, that they can exactly see where those streets are and who it is, and so it may eliminate some of those questions and concerns about parents. I know when we first started, there was a little error about where our border was in Williamsport, and they're all up in arms that the Van Leeuwen was going to somewhere else, but it really wasn't Van Leeuwen, it was another development. So that was quickly answered, because we had the software to show it.
And we can provide the overlays over our maps with Google Maps and Docs, so that people can actually see the distances in real time. They can look at their house and see how far it is to their new school, so.
But I do think that it would be helpful to make sure that when parents look at this, that they understand that middle and high school zones really are not changing.
Absolutely.
That it's only elementary borders.
It's really what kids are worried about.
Yeah, that's typically, that's the one that gets people worried.
So just to reiterate, this is a preliminary report. I know the FEAC has more work to do on this, based on the feedback we've gotten, the feedback you'll get from members of the community, and then there'll be a recommendation, a final recommendation coming to the board probably sometime late this year, that the board will be able to consider either late this year or early next year. So that's where we are in the process, and thank you to staff, and thank you to, please thank all of your colleagues on the committee as well.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. I need to swear a term.
Thank you.
Well done.
Yeah, Miss Taylor.